Planning Commission, Commissioners, you have the agenda before you. Do we have any changes or amendments to the agenda?
Yes.
Or additions? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Sure.
There is a second, all in favor. Any opposed? All right. I hope you've had a chance to review the minutes from last month's meeting. Any changes or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the February meeting.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second, all in favor.
Fine.
All right. Ben, do we have a staff report today?
I just want to make you all aware of one item, something that we've been working on and discussing for the last, I think it's been about a month or two. The International Building Code does require an order of adjustment for issues related to the building code. And so we've been working with the Mayor Board on drafting up an ordinance that would actually require the Planning Commission Chairman and then two other Planning Commissioners that could be appointed when, as needed, and a, like an expert, a person with expertise in a particular area, whether it's electrical codes or general building codes or mainstream, whatever the case may be, that could then also be appointed by the Planning Commission Chairman to hear, you know, maybe two, three times a year if that comes up that often, to hear those particular items of appeal or interpretations of the building official. We would anticipate that would take place before the Planning Commission meeting and wouldn't take much of y'all's time. So we just wanted to make you aware of it. It'll go for a first reading before the Mayor Board of Alderman tomorrow and then potentially be adopted at the next meeting after that after the public hearing. So just want to make you aware of that. If you have any questions, feel free to go ahead.
Okay, just to make sure I understand, it's going to be, the committee membership's going to be ad hoc with me chairing it. So each one could have a different representation from the Planning Commission, okay?
Yeah, what the IBC requires, JR, is that the members on there have some familiarity through expertise, training, education, or experience in the area. I don't think it requires that all of the members have it. I think you could have one or two ad hoc members who have a board ultimately decides, as well as somebody from the trades. And the trade person, what the city would try to do is get a list of folks willing to serve on that who are contractors or electricians or plumbers, whatever the case may be. And then they give you those names to choose from depending on what's the issue was. We've not had much call for this, but we've had a single call for it over the last few months. And it makes us realize we're deficient in our ordinances in not having a board of adjustment, which we used to have. The Planning Commission sat as a board of adjustment, but only on planning issues.
That's right.
I just think this is the simplest way to fix a very mild problem we have. And really, we probably set those meetings at 4:30 before an already scheduled Planning Commission meeting. They put on their proof. You listen to it as a subcommittee of the commission and you give me a really happy yet.
Okay.
That's right.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Yeah, please let the record show that Commissioner Alexander is accusing himself for the consent agenda. I'll read through the cases. There's public hearing for case, well, yeah, public hearing for case number 2837. Joel Reeves has filed a request for a variance from section 2.6.16.10. A, pre-existing planned unit developments. Grand Oaks PUD for property at 124 Rosemont Loop. Public hearing for case 2838. Richard Cross has filed a request for a variance from 2.6.3, estate residential front yard build-to-line minimum. Public hearing for case number 2839. University Sporting Goods has filed a request for special exception as provided in section 2.6.7, traditional neighborhood business, first-floor residential. Public hearing for case number 2840. Ninth Street LLC has filed a request for special exception as provided in section 3.5.8, residential common interest developments for property located at 412 South Ninth Street. Case number 2841. St. John the Evangelist Catholic Church has filed a request for special exception as provided in section 3.6.9.5, religious assembly uses, additional standards. Case number 2842. Savannah Square Oxford LLC has filed a request for a variance from section 2.6.4, suburban residential side yard setback minimum for property located at Pleasant Drive. Case number 2847. The Grove at North Lamar has filed a request for a site plan amendment for The Grove on North Lamar Savannah Square. And case number 2848. Brian Development LLC has filed a request for a special exception as provided in section 3.10.3.2, self-storage facility districts permitted for property located at 16 Thacker Road. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second, all in favor. Any opposed? All right. Could somebody bring Commissioner Alexander back in, please?
Our first case on the regular agenda will be case number 2827, tabled from February. West Jackson LLC has filed a request for a variance from section 98-112, stormwater ordinance for property located at 208 South Lamar.
All right, as you said, this item was tabled at the February Planning Commission meeting. Since then, the applicant has provided updated drawings indicating rooftop detention. Any modifications to the exterior design such as indicated roof detention must receive approval by the Courthouse Square Historic Preservation Commission. Engineering has provided technical comments to that, and Rihanna is on the line and the applicant's architect is here if you'll have questions.
All right, thanks, Robert. Joey, if you can come forward.
So just to summarize what I understand of the design, basically, there's been a detention basin added to the roof.
Third floor, yes, on the roof and the third floor.
Yeah, which covers approximately half of the footprint of the building.
Yes.
And so it adds about a foot to the height of the building and manages half the stormwater requirement.
That's correct. And that's, what's getting us is that uncaught, that's, you know, trying not to use the second floor where the, not a patio, but the porches, stick the second floor porches, you know, we didn't want to use that, so we've got the roof up there where there'd be no public access to it. And that's what we're using for storage. And, you know, we've got it shrunk down as far as the outflow goes, as small as we possibly can get it. But it's really the best we can do in this situation, I believe. So that's what we're proposing. You know, Stephen and Rihanna wrote a very detailed memo this afternoon. The only thing I would like to add is that I ran some other numbers this afternoon, and if you compare it to 208 that was there originally, which had no detention, you know, we're detaining basically 44% more than what they had at that time, if you average out all the events. So if you guys got any questions on any of that, I'm.
Yeah, I guess, just one question for you, which is, I mean, you said you didn't use the patio area. What's the reason not to use the patio area as a capture?
Just because we don't, you know, I don't want it to be pawning up on somebody's, you know, patio deck out there. I don't think that's, I didn't think that was practical to do. That's, you know, and that would be, I guess, the only way that we could add more, but I wouldn't want to be opening up my door and seeing, you know, three to six inches of water standing out there. That's just.
Okay, so the rooftop storage is limited by the design of the building.
That's correct.
Okay. Is the architect here? Corey, could you come forward, please? The variance application that was submitted last month when there wasn't a stormwater design rested on the need for subsurface discharge. And the design that was brought this month doesn't require any subsurface discharge. So my first question is, what are the special conditions and circumstances requiring a variance at this point?
Subsurface discharge is not possible, given the location of the city's storm.
We don't, we don't need subsurface discharge.
Well, then what would you ask me to?
Tell me, explain to me how the design that Joey just presented would be different if subsurface discharge were available. We're limited by capture area. That's what I just understood from what he said. So how would you capture more money, more water if you had subsurface discharge?
How would I capture more water if I had subsurface discharge? I guess I would say, but I don't have subsurface discharge.
But my point is that it's irrelevant.
Your question or our design?
His design doesn't require subsurface discharge.
But it requires a change in the design of the building.
Okay, so the design of the building is the problem.
The design of the building is changed to accommodate the request of the commission to have storm sewer discharge that doesn't go into a storm sewer system.
So tell me, so when did you become the architect on this project? Roughly?
I was first engaged in 2010, when we had the first collapse of the original building.
Okay, so 2010, we can start in 2020, because that's when the stormwater code was engaged, when it was demolished, right? March 2020.
Okay, well, what do you want me to say, Chairman Rigby?
Yeah, so my point is that from March 2020 to February of 2022, you had a year and 11 months to come up with a building design that would meet the stormwater code. And you brought us no design for stormwater last month. And this month, the design only covers half the footprint of the building, and the design of the building is a stumbling point. Is that correct?
The intent of the original design was to use subsurface drainage. It just turned out after we were done that it wasn't available.
Tell me how the capture area would be different if there were subsurface drainage.
We would put detention in the building that discharged subsurface into a drain.
Where would the detention be fed?
From the basement.
No, what capture area would be contributing to that storage?
I think you could get it with some roof gutters.
So the roof gutters on the part that now has a basin or the entire roof?
Well, if you had subsurface detention, you could have the detention basin underneath the building. So the areas that I was talking about not capturing, you could funnel those into a gutter system and shoot them below the surface. So your subsurface area would be larger. And you would be capturing that area that we're not capturing. But since there's nowhere to take it, we can only capture what's on top, you know, where the water's falling.
Right. And we did discuss this at the last meeting, but do you, is there any reason that you have to discharge subsurface even if the storage is below grade?
I mean, I don't think it's a good idea to put a pump in there, JR. That's my professional opinion.
I don't think it's a good idea to throw water on the roof, at all, ever. Who wants to put a bathtub on the roof of your building? I think it's a bad idea.
That's fine.
But that's, but we're proposing that. And we're trying to satisfy some requirement.
Has the stormwater code changed in the last two years?
I don't do stormwater design.
Okay, but you do do the.
I can say what the design intent was.
Are you telling me that you don't take stormwater design into account when you design a building?
We did. I do.
There was no design.
Engineer to design it.
There was no design for stormwater last month.
No, we were asking for a variance of the entire thing, which I think we have a good case to make. But that was not the, that was not the charge of this commission. It was find a stormwater detention solution that allows to discharge water onto the ground.
Yes.
That's what we've given you. Yes or no? I've got nothing else to say other than engineering.
The charge from the commission was to find a way to meet code that discharged the street.
Okay, I don't know what you want from me.
Okay, I don't need anything further. Any other questions?
I just have to say that I feel like we asked them to come up with a solution. We had a long discussion on a separate project with Mr. Holworth, you know, who I think eloquently said, hey, part of the problem is around the square. I think they've tried to meet us with something to resolve, you know, the stormwater issues best we can around the square.
I agree that they provided something that does some stormwater management. This is a square property on basically a flat parcel. And so if this has encumbrances that justify variance, there's no justification for stormwater on the square. And I don't think that's the precedent that we want to set. If there are issues with the code, we can take that up. But I don't think that this is the case to change the code. Because there are, there are plenty of engineering solutions to meet code on this property. I mean, in less than a month, you met it on half the property just by adding a foot to the building height. There's still a basement to the building that is used for nothing, as far as I can tell, and there are pumps. So I don't see why you couldn't meet code on this property.
Again, it's my opinion that it's not a smart idea to put stormwater pumps underneath the building. I know it's done in certain areas, but the first thing that goes when there's a storm is the power. And somebody, you know, that's not something that anybody's thinking about when, you know, it's pouring rain, there's no tenant in there being like, well, I need to run down there and check and make sure that pump's running. I've got family members that have some pumps in their house and they flood all the time because the power goes out. But as far as, you know, my professional opinion, me putting a stamp on it, I don't think it's a good idea to put a target to the building.
So what are, what's the grade drop across the parcel?
It's pretty flat. You know, it's probably two, two feet.
I mean.
So I don't know what he's got, you know, the bottom of the building will be flat.
I don't have the full site plan, but the elevations I saw showed a three-foot drop from the northeast corner to the southwest corner. Now, it seems to me if the southwest corner is three feet lower than the northeast, that you could put detention under a floor that was at the northeast elevation and drain everything by gravity to the street at the southwest corner. Is that true?
It does not.
Why?
Because the depth of the structure and the depth of the pipe attached to the bottom of the structure would be above, the street would be above that discharge point. You cannot grab any feet below the vertical structure.
So you put a foot of storage on half the footprint and had plenty to mitigate the stormwater on that footprint, right? It follows that a foot of storage on the whole footprint ought to meet the requirements. And you've got three feet of drop.
You're only taking into account one particular component. The stormwater pipe detention as you're referring to was 30 feet of 36-inch pipe.
That's one way to get a volume. You don't have to.
There's lots of ways to do it. We're proposing this one.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'd like to also add, I think we asked them to slow down one drop of water, I think is what we're told. I think they have made an effort to do that. And I think, you know, it's, they've made a good, fair effort trying to mitigate some of the stormwater.
I think that's charitable. In, just to clarify, I didn't ask them to just slow down one drop of water. We had a proposal not to do any stormwater management, which implied that they could not do any on the site. And I asked if they could not slow down one drop of water. Yeah. All right.
I'll add one thing as well. You know, I understand that this, the whole stormwater management is a new area, new area of engineering. We understand that. We understand it's probably going to cost money to deal with it. We understand that. But the city and the citizens of Oxford have entrusted us and the city to do things that are going to be better for the city, that are going to better handle stormwater in this case. And so they've put a plan in place. They've vetted it out. They've done the requirements. And like he said, we can go back and talk about that later. But as of, as we sit here today, this commission, what we're asked to do is look at the rules, see if they fit, see if it doesn't fit. Are we being logical or not? And I haven't seen anything illogical in this stormwater requirement here. I mean, Chairman Rigby's gone through, I think, several different variations, and I can think of several myself. I mean, you've got, you've got a height, you're going to have head built up from the back. I mean, you can have pressure from that, you know, to push your, and have you an overflow pump in the, or underflow, overflow basin in the basement, you know, and have your detention on top, and then have your overflow pushed out. And if it sits in that, in that, under, under the basement retention area, that's fine, right? So, I mean, and that's just off the cuff. I'm not sitting pouring over this. To me, we have to expect better out of licensed professionals, better than a Cub Scout, whatever you say, you know, like a good effort, a good faith effort. Well, that's not how we work. It's not a good faith effort. It is a requirement.
I think that's counted derogatory statement for professionals. I take offense to that.
Well, I didn't mean to offend you in any way. I'm a professional myself, and I hold myself to a high standard. We're all held to a standard, is my point. Right? And I mean, I would, I try to do the best that I can. I think you do too.
It's not dogma. It has been variance and has been adjusted several times.
Thank you.
It is, it is.
Thank you. If you'd like to speak, you can wait to be recognized.
It's our proposal. That's it.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the audience? From the commission? All right. I'll entertain a motion on the variance request for case number 2827.
I think a motion to approve the variance request.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? It's denied. Thank you.
Our next case will be a public hearing for case number 2843. Dunkin' Donuts has filed a request for special exception as provided in section 3.8.8.5. B, restaurant additional standards, drive-in service property located at 1739 University Avenue.
Thank you. So this is a request for a special exception to allow a drive-through restaurant in the traditional neighborhood business zoning district. The subject property's the University Shopping Center. It's been the subject of multiple cases fairly recently. But it's the shopping center that has among the businesses that are there, Walk-Ons, Allison Company, Don and Dale's, The Social Wine and Whiskey, et cetera. The center was recently acquired by University Shopping Center within the past few years, and improvements have been made to the buildings, to the parking lot facilities that have been installed. And so the applicant is requesting to transform the UPS building, and, which is going to be relocated to a different, different spot within the shopping center, into a Dunkin' Donuts location. And it will have a drive-through window on it. Neighborhood business does require this to be considered as a special exception, and the one criteria associated with it is to provide sufficient stacking space or queuing space for, for customers in the drive-through. Access, as noted in the staff report, I'm going to pick a few of the highlights here. It's a pretty lengthy staff report, but access to the shopping center, it has been a conversation or pointed discussion for several years now. We linked a staff report to Origin Bank, which inside of that, it even refers to the closing of the Burger King access point, Ingress and Agress, particularly because it's proximity to. particularly because it's proximity to the University and Bramlett intersection. That was also, it was also a pointed discussion during the renovations to the parking lot that that was something that would need to take place, closing the access. Inside the application here, you know, and the, and the primary concern is, as, as stated in this report, you know, as, as people travel to go to the Dunkin' Donuts and they get into, you know, into the drive-through, having the two points of ingress and egress creates kind of a choke point of where people are going to come in. And with queuing and success of restaurants that we have seen or coffee shops that we have seen, there's a potential to back into University Avenue. And given the proximity of these points of ingress and egress to that intersection, it is potential for creating some, some safety issues. Staff has noted to representatives for Dunkin' Donuts that customers using Burger King curb cut, that it could create, create some congestion because if the traffic queue or the customer queue, you know, is wrapped around the building in front of the building as designed in the exhibit inside your staff report, there is a potential for somebody to turn into the Burger King point of ingress and egress and try and kind of cut into line there, or they're not going to be let into line and people continue to turn in and so thus creating, creating an issue. In response to that, they did indicate on their proposal that they would provide cones to help block off and prohibit people from being able to turn into that drive-through. We do believe that it was, it was a bit lacking in that and, and that they should add more cones to at least close that off completely. Information provided to staff did discuss also fast food restaurant times and the average times for drive-through. And, and it appears that Dunkin' Donuts has an average queue length between McDonald's and Taco Bell size. And in Oxford that we have two examples within a stone's throw of, of this location. And at times they too get busy and, and McDonald's, which has a double queue, double stacking space, sometimes we, we see that where it's all the way out to University Avenue. So additionally, that's a concern for us. And, and we noted to, noted that to their representatives that that's something that we're looking, looking at to see how they're going to manage that and to make sure that that's not going to stack into University Avenue. On March 7th, they did provide us with notes that a security or police officer will prevent cars from queuing beyond the point noted with the blue line in the exhibit that they provided. It's not stated where those cars will be directed to queue instead. It just says that they will be directed not to block University Avenue. It's also not clear when staffing needs to be triggered. And this additional information also noted that the store will incorporate tablet ordering systems. So you'll be able to order with a representative standing there in the queue line. I think we're all quite familiar with that. Although it will not allow you to take payment at this point. Maybe that's something that the software integrates down the road. But that's a current concern because while you're able to order, you still have to wait in that queue and rapple around all the way to the pay window where you pay and then receive your, your order. In the exhibit, they did note some, some pull-through parking areas or parking spaces. So if you have someone with a larger order than, at that time when they pulled to the pay window, then, you know, they can be directed to go wait in one of those spots until their order is, is ready. Traffic impact study was not required for the Origin Bank. As noted in 2647, the recommendations at that time would not have been relevant for this case due to the change in the use. Staff does not anticipate that the traffic study for Dunkin' Donuts would provide recommendations or substantial changes to the roadway other than a possible recommendation to close the, the curb at Burger King. However, it might, might provide insight into expected queue lengths and alternative queue paths. This information may also be available outside of a traffic study, but has not yet been provided. Again, you know, the concerns with queuing traffic and being extended into the right-of-way. Dunkin' Donuts has provided information on how they propose to prevent this issue from occurring. The question of what to do if these proposed measures are not successful still remains. And city, city staff has considered that the curb cuts in University Avenue could be closed, either temporarily with cones or permanently with new curb. Staff has also considered that the use of the drive-through could be suspended of its operation if this is creating a negative impact or, or, you know, safety issue to the streets. It is worth mentioning that, as a matter of fact, as the last exhibit inside this packet, there is a, an alternative design that could, that would allow stacking into the shopping center or the queuing into the shopping center. And we have seen this in other, in other Dunkin' Donuts, even in Memphis. There's one that, that orders and queues on this one side of the building. That's not something that was, and I think it was considered, but it's ultimately not something that, you know, the applicant wishes to proceed, proceed with. I think Chairman Rigby sent an email last night with an alternative design that would show, and it, I think it could be a hybrid of what is in your packet or similar to what Chick-fil-A does where you would queue into the shopping center and it could wrap around the front of the, of front of the building. And then you would pick up on the opposite side where the window is right now, it would be on the opposite side. And so it would allow for some additional queuing in front of the building. But then the stacking and the queuing would be primarily inside of the University Shopping Center. That's not something that was discussed, you know, with the, the applicants prior to this. I did speak with their engineer, their engineer earlier today, or at least the shopping center's engineer about that. So I suspect that the chairman would like to bring that up. We have provided a positive or an affirmative recommendation with conditions that are listed in the staff report. And I think most notably, condition number five is if staff determines that the stack, stacking queue for the drive-through is creating a safety concern due to it not being managed or within the site or because it's extending into the public right-of-way, then the applicant will appear before the planning commission for reconsideration of the special exception.
Thank you, Ben.
Applicant team is here to answer any questions that you might have, or I'm happy to entertain that you might.
Any questions from the commission for staff or for the applicant?
Is there any, so as of right now, there's no idea of where traffic will be stacked if the queue gets filled? Is that correct?
Correct.
Is there, has there been any discussion or any kind of conversation about any possibilities about where that traffic could go?
Not with staff, but I can let the applicant speak to that.
Evening. Yeah, I mean, so if the traffic starts to stack out on University Avenue, we have a police officer, there really isn't another queue. We're turning those customers away at that point. We're not looking to queue them anywhere else throughout the center. If it starts stacking up on University Avenue, our goal is to have our officer or security company, whoever that is, they're, they're going to tell them they have to leave. So it's in our best interest to expedite and do it as quickly as possible so we can get all the customers in it we can. But our goal is to basically divert those customers away at that point. We're turning, we're turning customers away at that point. Our number one goal is safety here. So that's, that's what we talked about when we talked with Ben is, you know, how do we keep cars from backing up on University Avenue? The number one thing is the Burger King entrance was, I think, long-term or short-term. I'm not sure when you guys plan on closing that or when. Our number one goal is to cone that off so nobody can enter our drive-through lane from that entrance. The, the second thing is having an officer or a security company on grand opening, you know, however long that may be. That's, that's something that we're willing to work with the city and, and understand what you guys are looking for and, you know, want to work together and make sure it works out correctly. A number one goal is to, you know, make sure that, you know, the grand opening, game days, peak hours of certain days. And, and it'll be, you know, I, I know for the first three, four weeks, whatever that is, we'll have security out there, police officers, you know, so that University Avenue doesn't back up. And then after that, it'll be more, you know, it's trial and error at that point. What day is the busiest day? What hour is the busiest? Eighty percent of our business is done by 11:00 a.m. So that, that's kind of a, you know, positive thing for us because at that point it's just sporadic business. We are not like Starbucks at all. Starbucks is busy all day long. They do a way busier PM platform than we do. We're eighty percent in the morning. So our number one goal at that point is, you know, to talk to the city if need be and say, okay, you know what? We realized that, hey, Friday mornings are an issue. So Friday mornings, we're going to have an officer there from seven to 10 or 7:11, whatever those peak hours are. We currently have another store that we do that also where we have an officer. And there gets a little different there. Their job is to stop the road, alert customers out because the road is so busy. So it's a little different there. But, you know, one thing, he spoke about, you know, we're, we're early on this new tablet process. We've got about six restaurants that have it incorporated and helps speed up the service significantly. And then our number one goal.
You, you are actually able to take payment at the tablet, not cash, but you can take credit tab payments there. So it does help with the speed there.
That's good. Yeah.
And if you compare, I know you mentioned McDonald's. I mean, just to compare, McDonald's does have a double drive-through, but they also literally do double sales.
That is correct.
If you're comparing, you know, apples, oranges, it, yeah, they do have a double drive-through, but average sales for McDonald's is double what that is of a Dunkin' Donuts.
You mean that number of customers or?
Sales.
Just total sales?
Total sales. Yeah. I mean, relatively, yeah. I'm not sure what their number of puts there is, but I would.
Right. And the other thing we incorporated was the pull-forward spots. So anybody that comes in with a big order, I know we had the conversation was what if, you know, the store already shows up and they want 30 drinks or, you know, 20 sandwiches. Our goal is immediately get them out of the line and get them to the pull-forward spots and run it out there.
Yeah.
So.
All right. Commissioner, I'm thinking.
What are your hours of operation? And also, what is the, what is the reason why it hadn't been a, instead of just cones, why not a permanent barrier be placed there?
So. I mean, we, we don't, we don't, yeah, we don't, I mean. Yeah, so 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. Right? And like I said, eighty percent of our business is by 11:00. So we're, we're very, very slow in the afternoon. Yep.
So it's my understanding that the curb cut was intended to be closed when Burger King did a, you know, a new image, which was supposed to have actually been in 2020, but was postponed due to the pandemic. And so at that time, University Shopping Center was owned by, I'm sorry, the Burger King was open, owned by the University Shopping Center group. And since that time, it has been sold off. But the responsibility to maintain or to close that would be on the owner of Burger King. So that's something that would come, you know, soon, I would imagine, unless otherwise determined by the city engineer.
Are you asking about the university curb cut or the divider between?
The divider between.
Between the.
So there's not going to be a divider between Burger King and Dunkin' Donuts. It would be closing off of the, you know, the, the entrance off of University Avenue. That's right.
Yeah.
Just want to point out that a couple of things that were, that were already mentioned. You know, the, I don't think it's staff's intent to, you know, to only require this on, you know, grand opening weekends or the first, you know, couple of weeks that this is open or during game day weekends. I think yes to all of those, but I think it's ongoing until, you know, it's proven to not be an issue. You know, the Oxford Police Department, you know, they cannot provide an officer daily. So that would be something that would be, either a volunteer officer would go and work there or a private security firm would do that. So I just, I just want to point those elements out that it's not just the grand opening. It's not just, we've all seen a successful operation in a new place that's opened in this town and have a lot of people flock to it, but, but in a lot of instances, it's sustained for a longer period of time.
And that, and that's why I said it's trial and error, right? We were going to have to see what, you know, what days are busiest, what hours are busiest, and then we'll accommodate and adjust from there.
Other question?
I didn't see your, your email. So.
Yeah, you want me to describe that?
Yeah, I'm kind of, I'm imagining like Chick-fil-A on the other side of town.
So I was just curious. I mean, so I guess to summarize the case for me, the issue is that as it's designed right now and what was presented in, at the very end of the packet, it's kind of a decision between putting the risk of additional stacking on the city versus putting it on the shopping center, right? Are we going to stack back into the parking area or are we going to stack out into the street? And I appreciate, you know, the promise to have somebody onsite and, but you're getting between people and donuts and coffee at the same time, right? So I'm not sure how well that would work. But my question that I, I sent to Ben was if you took that very last figure that, that staff provided and put the drive-through window on the opposite side that it is currently, and then you come down and you wrap around the front towards Burger King and then come back up into the shopping center from there. In that case, you got a lot more stacking around the building. So there's not as much risk of interfering with the parking area. But if it does back up, it backs up into the parking. Yeah, there we go. Ben, can you point out what I'm trying to say? Okay. So like it's drawn here, come down on the left side and then go around the, there we go. Around the front of the building and back up that way with the drive-through window right there. And then back out into the, the parking lot. I'm not saying it doesn't have its own problems, but that was just an idea. So.
Yeah, I mean, that's not up to us. That'd be up to the, you know, the shopping center development, their engineer. I mean, it's, I mean, if that's what it took, you know, then that's fine. That works for us as well. But we don't really have a hard line on which one works better or not. You know, the only question I have is, is that an entrance there to be, or an entrance exit to be able to get to those parking spaces?
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Yeah. And I think, I mean, speaking personally, given that, that risk decision between putting it on the city to either manage things on University Avenue or you guys to come back to us, this condition five, and reconsider the special exception, I don't want to put the commission in the position of trying to get between people and donuts that are already there as well, right? So I'd rather set it up from the beginning so that we can manage the situation without having to do that.
Yeah, I mean, like you said, that's, that's up to them. I don't know. Does that take any parking spots? They meet all their parking criteria for the center at that point? I mean.
It looks like it takes away a lot of parking.
No, it looks like a couple. I don't know. I'd have to see side by side.
It would certainly modify, you know, the traffic flow of the shopping center. But, you know, because you'd be closing off that, that access point to that center parking aisle. But you could pick up, you know, where you're closing off two, I think, two parking spaces. I think we even previously discussed that you could actually pick those up. Where, where you're closing off that access point, you might even be able to pick up a few more parking spaces there. To your point, Chairman, it would certainly contain the queuing within the shopping center and make it a shopping center problem, not a, not a city problem with it being out into the university. But it also might provide maybe easier, an easier way for customers to leave the site where they would be able to go out and they could either come back, back down onto University Avenue or they could turn out and go onto Bramlett, down to the stoplight. They could turn left at a safe, you know, with a, with a yellow signal or, I'm sorry, a, a green signal, green arrow. At least it would be controlled.
Only thing about that is with the previous problems that we've already experienced, I sure hate to back that traffic up into the existing parking lot that everybody's been having a difficult time with already.
But if they give eighty percent of their business before one block.
That's true.
I don't think that that's an issue. I'm more concerned about somebody stopped on University Avenue and somebody coming down University Avenue at 40 miles an hour, looking at their cell phone and slamming it into the back of somebody is, is my concern with, with the way, I like this idea.
So the only, the only thing I'll say is, so we got surprised by this whole drive-through thing. We didn't know this by our, our landlord. Okay? So we've already submitted for plans, right? Our full construction plans have been submitted, you know, over a month ago. And that's when we found out, they're like, wait a second, you can't do a drive-through. We're like, well, we didn't know. So we would have to go back to drawing board and do all new plans at this point as well. All new layouts and everything.
I'm not accustomed to doing the design iterations in the middle of the. Why not take a step back?
Yeah.
So, I mean, these guys own their business. They, they know the operations better than I ever could. You know, there are probably countless iterations of how you can go through some possible solutions to the problem that we're discussing tonight. Maybe not countless, but more than I would care to go through tonight. But, and then I think as JR said, there, there has to be some balance between whether you're, I mean, there's a difference between inconvenience and safety concern, obviously. And, and so we definitely are going to have to balance the inconvenience side between people that are trying to get into the site from University Avenue. There are specifically customers at Dunkin' Donuts. There are specifically customers at Dunkin' Donuts and the other people that are trying to go to other businesses within the development. So there's a balance there. Now, if we go with anything similar to the sketch that you had up there a second ago, which is essentially creating, this parking bay would be a dead end on the south end. The only way to get out of it is go get a donut. That's not good design. That's poor design. That's a dead end parking bay that has how many parking spaces? It says probably thirty or so, forty spaces. If it's a busy day and a customer is pulling into the site from the north, they come into this parking bay and they cannot find a parking spot, they're not going to Dunkin' Donuts, they got to back their way out of there, not safe for me. You know, I, I think this really does have to boil down to the city of Oxford. The dog's role, as somebody stated on the previous cases, to look out for the public safety and try to do what's good for Oxford. And then I think in this case, the public shops at this parking center, right? These are public users of the shopping center, people from the public own these businesses. That's the public, just like the people driving on University Avenue. And there's a safety concern from University Avenue. I think the key to that boils down to, it's not about whether it's tablet ordering, it's not about whether they're faster than Taco Bell, it's not about whether they're double selling McDonald's or half the sales of McDonald's. It doesn't matter if they take thirty minutes to get a customer through. None of those things matter if they are committed and ready to control the possibility of people backing up the University Avenue. That's the goal. And if these guys have a plan that's feasible and they're ready to execute it and they actually do execute it and they're willing to be, adjust that plan and react to the reality on the ground, which none of us in this room can predict, then I think that's the key. And that's my two cents.
Can I ask you a question? Can you stick that back up? There you go. All right. Why can't on the, you see the little, little sidewalk above the red rectangle?
Yep.
Why can't you just do a curb cut there and you can have traffic going both ways in that, in that center, center section? So if somebody wants to go out towards University Avenue, they can bypass if there's a line queued up there.
And. Oh, well, I'm, I'm honestly, I'm not following you. You talking about the car type here?
Nope, there, yes, right there.
And what are you suggesting then?
Just a curb cut between that sidewalk that goes into that.
Here?
Yeah.
A curb cut here?
Yeah.
That's what that sketch showed that I just described, that creates a dead end parking bay. Or you have cars that are queued up from the drive-through aisle here, right? Dunkin' Donuts, they're queued up blocking this parking bay, which means no one coming into the building from this direction could in here. So then we're getting back to some sort of traffic control situation where they're not allowing people to block other users from making their way into this parking lot.
That island is a dumpster, isn't it? That island is the dumpster, current dumpster.
Uh, no, the dumpster, actually.
So I guess I don't understand why you.
Well, hang on.
Close that off.
Paul, if you can be patient with me for just a second. What if instead of coming down the, the parking bay that we were just talking about, they come out and they leave by the same one, right? So they're coming down the third row of parking. Does that make sense? So.
Coming through here?
Yep, come down in there, they go in at the top end of the building and they wrap around to the other side and they go out.
And then you're saying circle around in front of it?
Yeah, and then they go right back out.
That's more feasible than the first option we looked at that was attached to this. I mean, this, this.
Yeah, sure.
Which I totally respect the guy that put this together, but this was a quick thought.
Sure.
My opinion doesn't take into account any of the rest of the site. I mean, this, this drawing also indicates having no way to get in here, only an exit. I mean, I'm not sure what.
But I guess my, my point is why do you have to put a curb? If you flip back to that blue, why do you have to, why do you have to put that curb cut on? Because I'm looking at it the left-hand side. Why do you have to close that off? Why can't you keep that road open but just add an access road down into the Dunkin' Donuts?
Keep this access up?
Yeah.
So, so when cars are queued up in the Dunkin' Donuts, they're going to queue up here if they're, if they're at a busy time, which may or may not coincide with the business hours up there with other tenants, I acknowledge that. Assuming it does coincide with that, if they have a busy time and they are queued up to the north, they're going to be blocking anyone from coming in or out of this parking bay right here. Doesn't matter if that's got a curb there or not.
Even if you made that a double one-way down that?
Well, I guess, I guess my point would be if you left that open and even if they were queuing up and down that, it shouldn't be any harder to have somebody managing traffic to keep that one lane open than it would be to keep people off University, right?
You can't get the security guard standing out there in the middle of the street. I mean, you get him standing in the middle of a parking lot, this, this, you know, waving his arms saying, stop, 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 that's about doing thirty.
Paul, I, Paul, the, the points you make are very good ones. And, and your clients are here in a difficult time, looking at something for the first time. But I will say, as the lawyer reading this recommendation, and the last of the conditions is that if it doesn't work out, you've got to come back for reconsideration. Yeah, I want to be more pointed about that. It's not just reconsideration, it's reconsideration of the possibility that the permitted use no longer be permitted. And all of us want to avoid that, y'all want to avoid that. And Paul, and, and it does worry me that once you put those cones down and close off University, cars will learn quickly, well, I'm the last one who got closed off. I'm just going to sit here until that queue opens back up. And then what do the police do to move the traffic out of University Avenue to make them start going through the lighting? Maybe that doesn't happen, but it does worry me that there could be some unknowns that occur here that would be a showstopper to the operation of the vision. And to have y'all back before, six weeks later, having invested in that plan. If you could have, if you could have arranged it in a way internally that it can be fixed by yourselves instead of by raising the bill. I mean, that, that's, that's, that's how much this worries me with that highest condition on here as a legal condition that y'all are agreeing to a condition. You could come back and have your site plan approval removed worries me a lot. And so i- if there were a way, I, I bet they would accept that condition, but it worries me to put it on there. And if there were a way to look at another option, but I know time is money for everybody here, so I.
Well, from, from our perspective, we're about to invest, you know, a million dollars into this site. So if you pull our drive-through, we're out of business. It's that simple. Right?
Yeah, I know.
We will be out of business. Right?
I don't, I mean, honestly, I don't think, at least I haven't heard from the commission that we're talking about pulling the drive-through. It's just deciding the best configuration. And whether we, we want to go down the route of finding a different configuration or if we're happy with the condition as stated and move with it that way.
I'm, I don't like the condition because that's all that is, is, okay, we come, we, we come and say we're going to do that and then y'all are like, well, prove it. And then we got to, you know, make, put together the proof and then it's, turns into a lawsuit and it's, yeah, I spent way more money, you know. This comes from a guy that likes to try lawsuits, but yeah, you know. But y'all may know that operationally, you can make it happen what the city is telling must happen. That is, the traffic would still move on University Avenue from six AM to eleven AM. But traffic's not moving on one of our main arteries. Or nobody can turn left onto Bramlett at seven in the morning taking the kids to school. This will come to a head really quickly. And it's really up to y'all to decide, will accept on faith that we can operationally control it instead of design control it. That's really where, where we are and maybe.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think there are plenty of reasons for them to be involved. And I think we acknowledge that. And I think, I can tell they've had the same conversation behind those orders with these guys. So I just said here that if you're gonna, you know, if you're gonna do this, you're gonna have to have a plan that, that sounds solid to this group. Whoever's listening to this and has to be executed, it will have to be executed or, or things won't end well. You know, when this was designed, it wasn't contemplating a full-blown restaurant, but doesn't mean that it can't work. But, you know, again, these, these guys have to decide the risks it will take, you know, whether, whether this will, it's a, that condition. And we'll come back.
Everybody's, I was, I was.
I, I would echo those sentiments, though. You said something really, I think, that summed it up for me. You know, is our, if there is an emergency or if there's an overflow, are we going to depend on the operation or are we going to depend on the design? And I, I really like that. So let's, and to me, let's go, because I take kids to school and that is a busy intersection. And if you block it up for one cycle, you're going to have some people upset, you know, moms getting mad. So the various ideas about overflow, but into the parking lot versus into the street, that would, I think it's very important that your emergency be into.
Yeah, I mean, that, all, all fair enough. I mean, I think at this point, we just need to go back to the drawing board and talk to, we got to talk to everybody because, I mean, we may, so we may not have an option. I mean, if, if, if our landlord, developer, whoever it is, can't do it, can't do the other site plans, then we're stuck with this site plan, which means we'd have to execute, which we're very confident we can execute. We're not concerned about executing it.
Oh, maybe you and JR can clarify or whoever else. My understanding is, I'm, nobody's made a motion, so I don't know how that will go, but there's the, the recommendation for approval. And it is a recommendation for, for approval for the staff. It's a fact that have a condition tied to the, the, the actual execution of these controls by Dunkin' Donuts is not successful. And you have a risk of having to come back to this commission.
Right.
Well, we never finish that sentence, but we mean, yeah, having to come back with the potential of this site plan being reviewed and not approved based on its non-operation work. But we all know that, I'm just being real quick.
Yeah, Ben, can you clarify, this will come back for a site plan?
It does not.
It does not, okay.
It does not. They, they're using the existing structure and they're going to put a, I think, a new face on the, on the front of it. But otherwise, it, it does not come back. And for what it's worth, I think that leads to somewhat to the point that James made earlier that this did surprise them, this, this site plan actually has been approved, but it was a different user. And when the user changed, that made interpretation that I can't really argue with, but I think it's probably the correct interpretation. Different user leads to we look back again.
Yeah.
But in what you were about to ask, I think, Paul, that they can go forward with it and ask them both, and they may vote for it, they may all agree that with the conditions that the planning is put on there, that they'll sign off for it. It's just, it's, and on the other hand, if y'all could ask it and be tabled for one month and go ahead and. Everybody's asking you or telling you to.
Yeah, you're clarifying what I was attempting to ask.
Yeah, so.
This doesn't mean you have to back up and go with the alternatives.
Right. Well, I wonder if there, there are three options, not including rejecting it, which is always an option. But one is to approve it with the conditions that are stated here. One would be to table it and give y'all some time to look at it. It seems reasonable that we could also approve it subject to the condition that they come up with a suitable design that uses the parking area. And that would just be a situation where you wouldn't have to wait a full month necessarily if you came up with a design that staff found suitable. Is that reasonable? Yeah?
Yeah, I think that's at work. And then if you can't come up with that, then you just come back to the next one and say, sorry, we're asking what we asked for. And then you're already back where you were.
Yeah, yeah, if you can't find one that's suitable, you can come back to us and just ask us to do this design, yes or no?
Yeah, because I mean, we, we can't speak for the developer, the owner of the center, we can't speak for any of that. So I love that option. I mean, if we could, you know, somehow get it approved with this, but then try to table it and come back and, and, you know, not have to wait a month, that'd be awesome.
Okay.
It seems like a reasonable path forward. And I think it's worth, worth it half that, you know, this, obviously, I think everyone in this room or most of us know that this development, this complex, this shopping center has recently been renovated and it's quite nicer than it was before. But had that not just occurred, this will be an easier discussion. The fact that all this is new construction makes that, obviously plays into the decision, doesn't need to override safety concerns, but it does, it makes it a harder answer to answer.
Yeah.
Again, that seems like a reasonable path forward to me.
All right.
I'm just the engineer.
Any other questions?
So you're saying potentially someone can make a motion that they go back and come up with a design that utilizes the parking, parking of the shopping center. Well, I'm trying to clear this up.
Yeah, I think.
I want to be clear on the record, if somebody, somebody's involved in a wreck here and gets really injured, what we say here is public record that what they do, and I want it to be noted.
Yeah, I think.
What we're, what we're doing.
What I was suggesting is that we approve the special exception for the drive-through subject to the condition that they come up with a design in collaboration with staff that controls traffic flow through the shopping center rather than going, going out to University.
survives primarily internal queue instead of.
All right, so those are the four options as I see them. Reject or three different versions of approve. Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain any brave soul who'd like to come up with a motion.
Guess I'll give this a shot. I move that we table this case for, well, approve the drive-through and have them reappear with a internal, internal drive-through queue plan and/or a contingency plan to what we already have if the safety concerns, if the safety concerns that we have do become present.
All right, just let me clarify. So you, your motion is to approve the drive-through but to have them reappear next month?
Yes.
With an internal circulation plan and?
And if they can't do that, at least show us what the contingency plan is for the condition number five, because that's just too broad, the way it's written.
All right. Is there a second for the motion as stated?
I'll say it.
You have a second.
For the record, there was, this would be option, I think.
This would be option five. So, so the difference, the diff. Yeah, I mean.
Because I was going to make a motion for some of the difference, what I was going to say. And so I think closer in line with, I guess we can go through it all, let's just keep it all in the record, I guess. But I don't know that everybody's clear on what.
Yeah, so the difference between Commissioner Johnson's motion and what I had suggested was that he's asking that they reappear in a month. I think what I had suggested is that they, that we approve, but then they work with staff to come up with a design with internal circulation. And if they couldn't come up with that design, then they would come back to us for us to reconsider this with the design as presented here.
Because where are you guys from?
Atlanta.
Yeah, okay.
That's why I, you and I.
Okay. So the question is to you, do you want to go with your motion or do you want to amend your motion at all?
I want to amend it.
Okay, how would you like to amend it?
Working with staff, not reappear.
All right. So the motion is now to approve the drive-through and then for them to work with, the condition being that you work with staff for an internal circulation design that keeps all of the stacking within the shopping center. Does the second agree with the amendment? Commissioner Alexander?
You know, yes, I will second that. I do want to discuss one thing, though.
Sure.
I still go back to the stacking of everything into the shopping center. Because we just have debated that pretty heatedly over the last couple of months. And if, if I'm a business owner in that shopping center, I understand we're looking at it from two different directions now, though. And I realize you're going to be through business hopefully for eighty percent of it by eleven o'clock. So it's not going to affect a lot of folks. But I think we need to make it clear that we're going to do everything we can to make sure that it's, the problem is alleviated within the center too.
Well, to his point, having a security guard or police officer in the parking lot is going to be in the university drive. Sure. So I think that'll help a little bit.
I think the key is that that'll be adjudicated internally to the shopping center. And, you know, you'll have to deal with your neighbors and figure out what is needed to handle that. But it won't be a safety issue on, on University. All right.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
If we come up with a new site plan that's in the shopping center, do we get rid of all those five things? Are those gone? Because at that point, we're not, I mean.
You have five conditions?
The five conditions?
Yeah, I was about to ask about those conditions. So we're, we're getting rid of condition five. Did we want to include any of the other staff conditions? Those were Dunkin' Donuts is responsible for the operation of the queue, I think that.
Well, I suppose, I mean, we're going to value, I mean, see, we get condition number three, scaling with the cones and extending it and tablet ordering.
it's dealing with the cones and extending it and tabloaring and all that. Uh, I mean, I think.
Yeah.
We're, we're going to be working with them on that to make sure that they're putting that plan in place.
I think.
Really, number five's the biggest issue, yeah.
Well, I think all of those, I mean, we can do away with all of those conditions, because we're doing a larger condition that you work with staff to come up with an internal circulation scheme.
And staff would well require them, but I think the point everybody's getting to is those requirements will be easily met. If you're not queuing in the University, that's right.
Yeah.
Go run the risk of coming back.
And worst case, if you came to an agreement about general circulation, but staff was in transition on some other detail, you could always bring that to us next month.
And you, and you wouldn't have to cone off the burden inches at this point, because there's, there's no way they could queue in any of this. Your menu board's getting out of sight.
You're right. If, if we come up with some options, similar, we'll discuss.
I think it's. Okay.
One and four would still be applicable then. Conditions one and four.
Separate from coming up with the scheme?
Correct.
Okay.
It's just their responsibility to make sure that their, their stacking doesn't block University Avenue or the ride of way. And then, uh, the curb cuts could be closed temporarily or permanently. That's the easiest approach.
We have a motion amended and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
All right. Our next case is case number twenty-eight forty-four. David Blackburn has filed a request for preliminary plat approval for the Oaks at Oxford Commons, phases nineteen and twenty-seven for property located at Lakewood Hill Drive.
All right, so this request is, uh, for, again, phases nineteen and twenty-seven, which are the next two phases from seven and eight, which y'all looked at last month. Right, uh, the subdivision would be about seven point six-five acres with seventeen lots sized between point three-one acres and point three-nine acres, with about another point three-five acres, uh, for conservation and overs, uh, open space. Uh, the proposed lots comply with the dimensional requirements of the underlying zoning, and the density is appropriate to that area of the PUD, uh, that is tract N of the PUD and is allotted three hundred and eighty-six, uh, which after you take out the seventeen, you'll have three hundred and fifty-four lots remaining in tract N. Uh, sidewalks are indicated that would connect all the lots to future phases of the Oaks. Uh, tree mitigation in the open space is governed by the twenty sixteen tree mitigation variance and the twenty nineteen PUD plan, uh, that requires at least fourteen percent land preserved tree mitigation as well as at least twenty percent open space. Uh, there is a little bit, uh, on these phases of the PUD, but mostly, uh, there is over conservation, uh, indicated on phases seven and eight. So there's, they, they have a, uh, an overage that they're good for on these, these areas. A, a planting plan, uh, for front trees is still under development, and that is one of the conditions of the report. Uh, engineering has, uh, provided comments. Uh, there are some technical details and corrections, uh, that need to be worked on with this phase. Uh, they have provided, uh, comments related to access and streets, uh, water and sewer utility. Uh, staff recommends approval of the requested preliminary plat for the Oaks at Oxford Commons, phases nineteen and twenty-seven, with the six conditions that are listed in the staff report. And applicant's engineer is here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Robert. Any questions from the commission? Any questions or comments from the audience? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on case number twenty-eight forty-four, request for preliminary plat approval.
Motion to approve of conditions.
I have a motion to approve, subject to staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Case number twenty-eight forty-five, Oxford Commons Lots LLC has filed a request for a variance from section five, point five, point two, point six fences and exterior yard walls height maximum for property located at three twenty-seven Lakewood Hill Drive.
This property's located in the Oxford Commons PUDs. It's at the end of, uh, Lakewood Drive. The applicant's requesting, um, a variance for a fence that exceeds the four-foot height limitation in a front yard. Um, they're requesting a five-foot fence, so this would be a one-foot variance. Um, and, you know, primarily, when you look at the, uh, I think the irregularity of the lot shape, it makes it difficult to have a, a side yard, rear yard. Um, you know, the primary intent on regulating the height of a fence is to, uh, you know, limit the, you know, the blocking of the, uh, the building in and of self or the structure and, and obstructing the rhythm of the street. Um, so the applicant has a, uh, a fence here that's five feet. It allows for visibility. And when you look at the location, and I provided you all with an updated exhibit that, uh, that shows the location of where this fence will be, doesn't obstruct the, uh, the primary, uh, home on the site. Um, and for the most part, it's, you know, it's to the, uh, west of the house and, um, and then there's no fence in front of this. So, uh, staff recommends approval, um, you know, related to the irregularity of the lots and, uh, the topography issues. Um, and it's for the plan I submitted.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions from the commission? People are looking closely but not asking questions. All right. Any questions or comments from the audience? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on case number twenty-eight forty-five for a variance from section fences and exterior yard walls height.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor? Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
It's granted. Thank you, Ben. Case number twenty-eight forty-six, Mac Montith has filed a request for final plat approval for the Lamar Phase Four for property located at west end of Cincinnatus Boulevard.
All right, okay. So this phase is, uh, twenty acres or so, and will connect Chick Saw Road to the existing Phase Two of the Lamar. Uh, the most recent land use allocation for Lamar indicates areas of single-family detached, uh, single-family attached-detached, uh, civic space and green space in this phase. Uh, ninety lots are planned for this phase, eighty-two of which are residential. Uh, the single-family detached residential lots will measure between, uh, ten thousand-ish square feet and about three thousand square feet with an average size of about five thousand square feet. Uh, the single-family attached-detached residential lots will measure between five thousand and three thousand, uh, square feet with an average size of about four thousand, and there will be about two hundred and one thousand square feet of open space, uh, portions of which will act as stormwater detention, and there'll also be about forty-two thousand square feet of civic space. A planting plan for mitigation trees is provided by the applicant that indicates a hundred and eighty-three new trees, uh, to be planted between phases two and four to mitigate the trees removed. No other changes are indicated on the final plat from the preliminary. Uh, covenants have not yet been received by the plant department, uh, and that is a condition of approval. Uh, engineering has provided comments related to streets, retaining walls, water and sewer, stormwater drainage, stormwater system ownerships, stormwater management facilities, uh, street construction and traffic issues. Uh, let's, I got, Rihanna has asked an additional, uh, condition to be added to the five that are here. So staff recommends approval of the final plat for Lamar Phase Four with the five conditions that are listed in the staff report, as well as a six-one, that a subdivision bond shall be provided prior to the request for final plat being heard by the Board of Alderman.
Thank you, Robert.
And the applicant's engineer is here if y'all have any questions.
Any questions from the commission? Any questions from the audience or comment? All right. I'll entertain a motion on case number twenty-eight forty-six, uh, for final plat approval for the Lamar Phase Four.
I make a motion that we accept the request with the six conditions provided by staff.
I have a motion, uh, to approve, subject to the six conditions stated. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. All in favor? All right, it is approved. And our final case this evening will be for case number twenty-eight forty-nine. Jay Luna has filed a request for site plan approval for, for Thacker Storage for property located at sixteen Thacker Road.
So this is effectively a reapproval of a site plan that was approved by the commission in twenty eighteen. Um, the, uh, the applicants were approved for a, uh, an indoor climate control storage facility off Thacker Road. It was four stories, measures about, uh, I don't know, nineteen thousand square feet or so. Um, in, um, the, the applicant pulled permits, they landed disturbance permit, they installed, uh, a, a majority of the infrastructure, retaining walls, drives, um, stormwater detention curb gutter, um, and then, uh, and then paved, I'm sorry, they, they grassed the site, and then the pandemic hit and halted their progress. They waited. Um, the building permits expired, so, um, they're back before you seeking a reapproval of this. Nothing has changed inside of what was previously approved. Um, so staff recommends approval. Engineering did provide comments related to access water and stormwater. Staff, uh, recommends approval of Thacker Storage with the three conditions noted in your staff report.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions?
Did you say four stories?
It is.
Any additional questions? Anyone from the audience wish to speak? All right. I will entertain a motion on case number twenty-eight forty-nine for the site plan approval for Thacker Storage.
Motion to approve, taking the staff recommendation.
I have a motion to approve, subject to staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. All in favor? All right, it's approved. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Show move.
I have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor? Thank y'all.